Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone.
It's always good to be seen and always even better to see you. So we thank you all for being here. We appreciate everyone being here. Again, thank you all so much and thank this minute that allowed us to serve. Thanks to all the departments here. With that being said, I am calling me the board. At this time, I'd like to call Pastor Adrian and Chester. Very well with the church invitation came after that council. They believe us with your presence and stand and remain and stand. Thank you.
Brothers, right? God, I hope that you staff you do that in our fellow. And we thank you for this opportunity to serve as stewards of this your world we're looking. We ask now that you, God, have conversations with wisdom. Give us strategy and resources of how to serve you by serving for you. In the name of Jesus, would you pray? And we all say it.
Amen.
Amen. Please raise your hands, please. Attention, salute, clear.
I'm going to give allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Chester. Thank you Steve Major, the pastor of New Orleans State. If you leave, there will not be anyone against you. I promise you that. Proceeding on at this time, we have a presentation and proclamation. At this time, I'd like to call the city clerk for reading the proclamation. Recognizing building safety, Mrs. Davis.
Whereas our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when it's actually described. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the building environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us and the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wild wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our communities. Largely unknown protectors of public safety are local code officials who assure us of safety, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas game on, the theme for Building Safety Month 2025 encourages us all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in service of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local, state, tribal, territorial, and federal building safety and fire prevention departments and protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I A and L, Mayor of the City of Vining City, Alabama, and on behalf of the city council, hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month. And the City of Vining City, Alabama, accordingly encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Break. Come on down. Come on up.
Chief. I want to call up Chris to end it here, please. To the critical point.
I know we do this every year, but it is not just. We all know safety is the first line of defense that we all have to provide for. And because of how you thank you all for what you all do. And again, this is probably happened myself and the council. We presented this to you because it's mission critically important. I'll say we start off like you're doing. Thank you all so much for what you all do. Thank you. Thank you. Oh.
I'm going to go back there with some of your job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, do you have your words, Chris? Yes, sir. Thank you all very much for all the support. We thank you all that you're all willing to help us adopt the most recent codes and help us enforce those codes. Thank you all for, you know, for supporting us and having.
Thank you. And as you know, it is a national service from the top down. So thank you all for being with us also. Proceeding on, council, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion under the city clerk, a motion for the approval of the Ravens Gate Division meetings. We will do these separately. The first one is that this time I'd like to ask for a motion of March 31st, 2025, work session, may I have?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, Mayor of Sackville, Councilman Gordon. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, council, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the April 1st, 2025 council meeting. May I have a motion, motion to approve? All right, we have a motion from Councilman Gordon, Mayor of Sackville.
Second.
Sackville, Councilman Gordon Green. Okay. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of.
Yes.
Thank you.
And now, council, proceeding on, under city council, there are unfinished business that the council may want to discuss. And now, we will proceed on of the resolutions. In honor of administration, we have a resolution of 2025 that's accepted to be ratified in reference to authorizing the arrangement of the mayor and city manager to have a war grade and contracted incorporation to perform emergency work on the US 431 water main and an amount not to exceed $42,680. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the water leak has to be repaired on the 16-inch water main along US 431. And whereas to determine what is needed to repair the leak, to determine the time needed to make a repair. And to make a repair, the water must be turned off. And whereas the time that the water will have to be off is unknown and could be two hours or two days or more. And whereas currently, when the water is turned off to the location of the leak, a large area, including the industrial park, the village at Crosswinds, retail drive, the fire protection to CBCC, and a portion of South Silver Road would not have water. And whereas to turn off the water to the least number of customers when the leak is repaired, a valve must be inserted in said 16-inch water main. And whereas it is necessary that this work be performed as expeditiously as possible to ensure public safety and allow the leak to be repaired without turning water off to a large area for a possible extended period of time. And whereas War Grade Contractor E submitted a code to install the valve in the amount of $42,680. Now therefore, be resolved that the city council of the City of Vining City, Alabama, does hereby declare the repair of the US 431 water main and valve insertion and emergency and authorize and directs the mayor and city manager to hire War Grade Contractor E to install a valve on said main in an amount not to exceed $42,680. Pass the provision adopted this 9th day of April 2025, ratified this 15th day of April 2025.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council, we heard your resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to ratify.
Motion to ratify.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and I have a second.
Right.
Second by Councilman Day. Any comments or any discussion?
All right, yes, sir. Mayor, I know for a fact that if you get a bad notice out for a bad bid, you're going to be told to make a battle. I was curious. Because that's a lot of business.
Mayor, council, will you? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We're going to try to get at least a few days' notice before we're going to schedule this with the contractor. And then, I don't know if this is going to be over. I'm sorry about that. That the customer wants to get ready to turn tomorrow. We'll schedule that. And a lot of those letters are going to be on that. It's a big part of having to get these turned on and installed.
Okay, I noticed when we have time, we normally get rebid, but this is a motion situation, which is true for these both way here.
Yes. We actually have two projects, but they're the same project.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It is that you would, you know, so possibly would be discussed because it's an actual one. They've dug in, but couldn't have built the water flow with exactly the leak. We saw it right here, right here being where it's the water. It's going from, and it's turning to one car. So I was like, yeah.
How long can they take to repair that? I mean, when they run that through, I mean, to put the temporary, not temporary, to put the valve all that is going to lie and not to turn off so many people, how long can they take to do that?
Yeah, they, once they get the next phase, they part that with four hours.
So we've made a lot of that, people have taken it before trying to. How many more of those things do you have within the city? Is this the first one we're going to try to use in an area because something like this comes up, but we haven't in other areas already?
We have another area. Yes.
When we have a valve that magnitude, do we have to tell them a story? Do they want to do a story for that?
No, so we're going to have to have those installed, these installed. We should, we have machines to install small ones. We're not seeing.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, John. Thank you, Councilman Day and Councilman Bailey. There's no more questions to discuss in the company? At this time, I'd like to call for a vote, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Proceeding on, council, on the building department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract agreement with Ben Gordon Construction Company and Corporation for renovation to the Vining City Information Technology Building located at 1211 Seventh Avenue in an amount not to exceed $1,665,000. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the City of Vining City is proposing to renovate the existing building at 1211 Seventh Avenue and to the Vining City Information Technology Building. And whereas the City of Vining City has solicited CO bids for said construction. And whereas the city received two bids for said renovations with Ben Gordon Construction being the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $1,665,000. Now therefore, be resolved that the city council of the City of Vining City, Alabama, to accept this bid and authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into a contract with Ben Gordon Construction in an amount not to exceed $1,665,000 for renovations to the Vining City Information Technology Building located at 1211 Seventh Avenue. Pass the provision adopted this 15th day of April 2025.
Okay. Council, we have all heard the resolution, the read of the resolution from our clerk. At this time, council, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve it.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Green, and that's the second of your day. So council, we have the motion in the second. Any comments or discussion?
Yes, I'm happy for information purpose only. It's not this quarter right here. Yeah. It's a bit.
All right. All right. And now, comments for the call for the vote. And now, proceeding on. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Proceeding on, council, on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to accepting the dedication of public utilities and easements dedicated by the final plan of Somerville and Lakewood subdivision, Ward Development Company and Corporations owner. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas City of Vining City Planning Commission has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to accept the dedication of public utilities and easements dedicated by the final plan of Somerville and Lakewood subdivision for Ward Development Company E, located in Section 34, Township 18 North, Range 30 East, Russell County outbound, dated March 20th, 2025, prepared by Mark D. Stroger, registered land surveyor. And whereas the owner of said property, Ward Development Company E, desires to dedicate the same to the City of Vining City. Now therefore, be resolved that the city council of the City of Vining City, Alabama, does hereby accept the dedication of public utilities and easements as shown on the above referenced final plan. Pass the provision adopted this 15th day of April 2025.
Okay. Thank you again, Mrs. Davis. Council, we heard your resolution. And it's time I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilman Gordon, and I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Comments or discussion? Okay, if there's no idea, at this time, I'd like to call for the vote. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, council, on the engineering department. We have a resolution in reference to award a bid to Columbus Court for E-25 dash zero one adder bits. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas City of Vining City has solicited CO bids for bid E-25 dash zero one adder bits. And whereas Columbus Query submitted the only bid meeting the specifications. Now therefore, be resolved that the city council of the City of Vining City, Alabama, does hereby accept the bid from Columbus Query for E-25 dash zero one adder bits. Pass the provision adopted this 15th day of April 2025.
Okay. Council, again, we all have heard the resolution. And at this time, I'd like to ask this council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and I have a second. Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion? All right. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, council, on the finance department. We have a resolution in reference to accepting the general fund insurance proposal from Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation authorizing the purchase of property, automobile, inland marine, general liability, and cyber insurance coverage. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas City of Vining City's general fund has a need for property, equipment, automobile, inland marine, general liability, and cyber insurance to protect its assets. And whereas the city has received a proposal from Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation for the general fund's property, equipment, automobile, inland marine, general liability, and cyber insurance coverage. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city to accept the three-year premium option with Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation, which offers a 2% discount on the insurance premium each year of the three-year term, with a total cost for the first year premium of $746,436 for the coverage period of April 15, 2025, to April 15, 2026. Now therefore, be resolved that the city council of the City of Vining City, Alabama, hereby accepts the general fund insurance proposal from Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation and authorizes and directs the mayor and city manager to sign and purchase the general fund insurance coverage from Alabama Municipal Insurance Corporation. Pass the provision adopted this 15th day of April 2025.
Okay. Council, we evolved under the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Green, Mayor of Sackville.
Second.
Second, Councilman Day. Any comments or any discussion? We can't allow, the process is, you have to do that in the works. All right. Any other questions, council? Any questions? All right. Now, it's time I'd call for the vote. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon.
Yes.
Mayor of.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, proceeding on, council, on the IT department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into an assignment agreement with Time Clock Plus LLC, paying time and attendance system for a term of 60 months with an automatic renewal unless terminated in accordance with the agreement. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas City of Vining City currently utilize a manual, paper-based, and timekeeping system and seeks to modernize its time and attendance process. And whereas Time Clock Plus LLC offers a comprehensive time and attendance solution that integrates with the city's taller technology, Nuance Enterprise ERV payroll model. And whereas Time Clock Plus was selected following a demonstration on February 7, 2025, and a favorable review of the proposed local work features in contract terms. And whereas the city has confirmed that all contract documents have been reviewed and amended to reflect the city's standard legal language, including provisions regarding dispute resolution and governing law. And whereas the total contract value over the 60-month term, including all one-time hardware, implementation, support, and recurring licensing fees, is $285,151.23. And whereas the agreement will be executed under Amia Partners Contract Number 14-10, which meets the city's procurement requirements. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the City of Vining City, Alabama, that the mayor and city manager are hereby authorized and directed to execute, and the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to attest on behalf of the city, the agreement with Time Clock Plus LLC for a time and attendance system for a term of 60 months with automatic renewal provisions unless terminated in accordance with the agreement. A copy of said agreement is attached here too, incorporated here in, and made a part here of our reference. Pass the provision adopted this 15th day of April 2025.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. Reading of the resolution, council, which we have all heard. At this time, I'd like to ask the council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Day, and I have a second. Second, Councilman Gordon. Comments or discussion?
Just a brief comment here, or perhaps a question as well. So with streamlining, I don't see it hard to bring, but with streamlining the process of time and attendance, we have a lot of field workers. How would that work for being for lunch hours and stuff like that?
We have some, you asked us, you want to talk about that?
Just for the moment. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
This system here right up front, we use a spreadsheet. So everything has to be on time clock for hourly employees, or it's going to be going out on a sheet for salary employees. But then, like you said, you got a gentleman out in the field. Maybe they want to take a lunch, things of that nature. This system is a system that started as a ball space system. I don't know if y'all remember that term from back in 1988. It then went into a windows application. It was specifically for like a restaurant. It was having those at the beginning. Then it continued to evolve. Eventually, it got into a web-based application, which is what we all talk about. And so this is accessible by desktop. If you've got employees that has a PC, as long as it's at work, you can't reinvade it. It's just there, you can get them or increase them. You're like, oh, yeah. Lock in. But if they're at work, they can sit there and talk in on the desktop. We also have like tablet units, kind of where time clocks used to be. Some of the partners want to have time clocks. It'll also take a picture. The sound, I can't hear them talking for me. And then you went back to the individuals you're talking about as far as it's away from the job. If they're waiting for lunch, if they have a smartphone, they're able to sit there and talking about that as well. But it's got to be within the geofencing. In other words, they've got to be here in a location. They don't have to come all the way back to the main campus. But it's got to be near the city facility. So you don't have people just like to run late. It's like they'll be talking. They have safeguards in place to keep that from happening, which you know, there's always those who's going to try. But now, this system, like I said, will give you guys a bunch of people that are late. You'll tell you, you've got 10 people that talk to anybody. You've got 10 people that are mispunished. It'll give you an upcoming vacation. Pretty much anything at a glance right now, you might not know to be what you have in those time clocks. You forgot from 10. Then you got to get them. So it's going to free up a lot of time to spend at the park level before they're against the payroll employees. So across the board, you're going to save a lot of manpower and a lot of stress for employees calculating this and having it advanced or having it at glance. Whereas at the last minute, you can ask anybody that works at payroll, they're stressed to try to get all that punched in. And if somebody makes a mistake, somebody's going to fix it. And this, this system covers up 500 employees. So that is a lot to key in. I think we have 400 plus right now. But that is a lot of information to key in. And it handles, it handles the salary. You've got, it is fully customizable to what the city needs. Whereas right now, we're just using this system at this point. Well, she was all almost crazy. Does that answer?
Yeah. So the hourly employee, again, but the salary employees, they still have to lock in?
They is able to keep up with that. And it can be customizable to fit the needs of the city for, for those salary employees, so that you don't leave those out. I mean, you know, because you got firefighters, you got police officers, you know, the salary, you know, the people who manage their salaries. All of that's fully customizable to meet what the city already does.
Well, they should just, you should take control and let the people don't have to come all the way back to the main campus. They're outside that.
If, if they have a city smartphone, they're able to do that. Because it's going to be kind of restricted to those. If we have a crew, they're going to have to come to a facility. It can be close by, the rest of the facilities everywhere that has one of the time clock units, and they can clock out if it's a situation where that's something, you know, that the supervisor wants to do. But they don't have that ability anywhere in the, in the city. If, if.
Field crew that customize the way they want to go in. They won't be stopping on the job, come back here. Go get your okay. It's totally different. All, all the workers are totally different this year. Everybody got a different spec. So everything's got to be, the reason why we did this is built towards whatever, different department or division, whichever way that's worked.
Because it's different.
It's not, we got a lot of time. Well, we won't be doing that. Well, we won't be doing that. That's, that's not a problem. Yeah, it's, we don't need that.
Jim, it doesn't round up, uh, bands from hours on. And then...
I don't know if it rounds up, it will keep up to, to the hours here. And basically, like I said, it's, uh, you know, like right now, we use a spreadsheet. It's actually a spreadsheet. They're, they're very good spreadsheet that was developed, but it's the same spreadsheet from twenty years ago. But that also, uh, pans up, you know, the hours or the key in, but this software will do the same. And, uh, if it's, if it's rounding up or doing something that's not necessarily, they can, they can fix it correctly. That's why I say it's fully customizable. Because when you look across the city, now everybody's, people are coming on salary. Everybody's hourly here, and it's different with a different quality. Now you got part-time, then you got seasonal. All of those things can be incorporated. It's, uh, and then if you got a problem, you got twenty-four seven support, seven days a week. That's also, uh, nice, but the worry is something that we can't do, IT can't do.
It should save some time, too.
I guess it's going to save a tremendous amount of time. Instead of everybody having to scavenge time issues or paperwork to go through, it can be submitted, uh, in our, automatically capitalized. It was giving you telephons instead of just watching time that you got to do.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, Jim. Good job.
Thank you.
And other comments or discussions? All right, now we want to call from both, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next council on the Police Department. There's a resolution in reference to the plan office chairs as listed on Exhibit Eight as so close to be sold as scrap on disposal at the city land. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the Police Department of the City of Phoenix City has property which is no longer needed for federal or municipal purposes. And whereas Section eleven dash forty-three dash fifty-six of the Alabama Code of nineteen seventy-five that's amended, authorizes the municipal government body to dispose of unneeded personal property. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the sprawled office chairs listed on the attached sheet label exhibited are hereby declared surplus to be sold or disposed of if no one purchased them. Passed through and adopted this fifteenth day of April, 2025.
Okay, thank you so much for the reading of the resolution. And council, we heard the resolution from our firm. Stand by, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from councilboard. They have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Davis. Comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next council on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize the agreement that the mayor and city manager to sign change orders number three, four, five, and six with PF Moon and Company and cooperating on the wastewater treatment plan and primary clarifiers upgrade and improvement project. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero-six awarded the contract for the wastewater treatment plant WWTP, Primary Clarifiers Upgrade and Improvements Project to PF Moon and Company Inc. for a contract price of one million eight hundred eighty-nine-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And whereas Resolution twenty-two-four dash one thirty-three approved change orders one and two for said project at a cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars, which increased the contract price to two million fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. And whereas PF Moon and Company Inc. has submitted change orders three, four, five, and six, which the Utilities Department wishes to include in the project. And whereas, a change order would result in a contract adjustment of a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy cents, causing the contractual amount to be two million, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and seventy cents. And whereas, it has, has been determined that a change order is deemed necessary, more specifically as follows. Change orders. Change order number one, I'm sorry, change order number three. Scum piping modification due to frogging in existing piping. Additional cost, six thousand four dollars. Change order number four. Additional concrete grounders above the allowance amount. Additional cost, twenty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Change order number five. Concrete repairs to the clarifier's clear box. Additional cost, forty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars. Change order number six. Electrical work for the clarifier wiring and handles, including tracing out wires, replacing wiring and conduit, and new push button and wiring in the existing panels. Additional thirty-six thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. Bringing a total to one hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy cents. Whereas, there is a one hundred forty-five thousand dollar credit for this project in the clarifier floor repair apartment, which would decrease the total contract price to two million, twenty-four thousand, five hundred seventy dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby direct and authorize the mayor and city manager to sign change orders number three, four, five, and six for the WWTP Primary Clarifiers Upgrade and Improvements Project. Passed through and adopted this fifteenth day of April, 2025.
Okay, thank you so much, council, we heard the resolution. May I ask the council for a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from councilman Davis and second, councilmember Green.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and we have a second, council. Any comments or discussion?
Yes, sir, ma'am. I believe this is a matter of not ready for the citizens of Kansas City. These changes are unnecessary.
Mayor, because these changes were out of the, I mean, we were working on the clarifier. And, uh, things that just may be done to improve the function of the system and the life of it. It's going to find a way to, since the cloud has been amplified enough to that flow was verified, preventing the water from, some concrete deteriorating, uh, more than what had been, been anticipated. So that submission caused, uh, splitter blocks, some of the concrete material where the surface had worn away a few years of that, it's repaired and concrete. And then the electrical work, it was just, uh, all the electrical wires had just need to be replaced. The insulation was kind of, uh, brittle. And, uh, that wiring, some of the work on the panels needed to be replaced. So that's, that's what these changes were responsible for, the clarifier project.
How long is it like this, David, for him to do this?
Uh, not very long. I think probably, within, probably one, within, uh, a couple of weeks.
So when they get a agreement on this job, they didn't see it on a...
No, not till the work, they got down to the most, very, very little. It was inside.
Okay, that's what we have to do. Got to give you certain statements of the city, and five other things that have to be big, you mentioned what you're saying.
Yes, a lot of things, like water, like splitter boxes and the clarifiers. So, uh, that's the extent of some of the deterioration that you get all the way on that.
Was that kind of work for a decade, and then died from years?
No, at least for a year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, John. We appreciate it. Good job. Thank you. Another comments or discussion, so much. Now then, it's time to call from both, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Senior honor of the Utilities Department Council. We have a resolution in reference to purchase one, twenty-fourth board, board F two-fifties, approved four-by-four pickup truck purchase on state contract T one-nine-one from Cyrus Ford, made in Montgomery, Alabama. And the amount, not, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, under the Alabama State Law for public contracts, municipalities can purchase property under a state deed provided that the state deed so provides. And whereas, City of Phoenix City Utilities Department, Waterford Treasure Division desires to purchase a trust for the operators. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, that the following shall be purchased under state contract T one-nine-one, State of Alabama Contract Number two-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-three-one-two-eight-dash-twenty-two, with optional equipment from Cyrus Ford, Lincoln, Montgomery, Alabama. One, twenty-two-four, four, F two-fifty, supercrew four-by-four truck, fifty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars. Add option to strobe lights, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Total cost of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Passed through and adopted this fifteenth day of April, 2025.
Okay, thank you again, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution. And it's time, council, I'd like to ask you for a motion of approval. Motion from councilboard, they have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Davis. Comments or discussion? Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, council on the Utilities Department. We have a resolution in reference to authorize the agreement that the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with one-twenty quarter for continuing services of the resident notification program with survey and the customer request sampling program and the mountain dot AC four-seven thousand, one dollar and ninety cents for twenty-four months. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, the City of Phoenix City Utilities Department operates and maintains a water distribution system which is regulated by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, AM, and the Environment Perfection Agency, EPA. And whereas, EPA's lead and comparable rule revision, LCRR, requires the City of Phoenix City to create and maintain an initial water service line inventory. And whereas, EPA's LCRR requires the City of Phoenix City to provide annual customer notifications and sampling for customers who have service line materials listed as unknown in the service line inventory. And whereas, City of Phoenix City has received a proposal for continued services for one-twenty quarter to provide full forward system, DWS, allocation with inventory program and event management. We're closed communication and public transparency desk for ETV and lead and comparable rule improvement, LCRI, enhanced managed services package for a two-year contract agreement in the amount of forty-seven thousand, one dollar and ninety cents. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into and sign an agreement with one-twenty quarter for continuation of services creating the resident notification program with survey and the customer request sampling program in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, one dollar, ninety cents for twenty-four months. Passed through and adopted this fifteenth day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. I can't, it doesn't, I'll just end. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Davis, for the reading of the resolution, which council we heard. Stand by, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from councilman Davis and a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Gordon. Okay, comments or discussion?
If, uh, the stuff is unknown, is mostly in search of parts of town that we have to see, or is it older stuff that, you know, we put in years and years and years ago? Just, you know, I'm thinking, is it old stuff or...
Probably. It's spread out all over the city. We have some, we do, with the information we had, it would be non-lead.
Right.
Newer services or places that were built after a certain date. But there's a lot on there. It's not isolated to a certain area. If you look at that dashboard, it's got the mass, you see what that is. It's just spread out.
It's spread out. Well, I mean, we got older work within the city, but not, not they located one place.
It's a, it's, it's attached to the type of materials that was used in one of those times.
That's what happened. Yeah. And once, is this something that once we see that what it's made out of, I think we don't have to contact the owners or people again to let them know continuously. Uh, but I think the challenge is what I'm saying.
Yes, and then it will be updated, but every year if, if the service line has not been identified as non-lead, we still have to, to make sure. Um, and then we're going to be working on that for you to, plus they have something to know. Basically, all the, when we know that they're non-lead.
Will you map out the whole city, basically, so I'll let you get mapped out?
Yes, sir. Well, we got a map. We just want to keep to it, and that, uh, what material is.
Correct.
Hopefully, they'll all be non-lead, uh, between some of the, or lead, or even they have some that are, it's galvanized. And you don't know whether, if you can't determine that it was ever downstream of a lead line.
Correct.
You have to assume it was downstream of it, if it's galvanized, and that's generally what you get. So it's done, it's just lead, it's just these galvanized surfaces that they have in.
They could have been contaminated, so it's... Right. All right, that's what I'm, I'm just curious to, you know, if it was in one area, once over another, the older stuff, and then, you know, how do we, now, once it's, once it's found, it'll be what it is. You know, how do we, you know, just map that out or whatever? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John. So you think, and other comments or discussion, questions? Now then, it's time for Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
And council also on the Utilities Department. There's a resolution in reference to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into and sign an agreement with ABS Environmental Services for calibration, operation, and maintenance of sanitary flow monitors and rain gauge and data collection. Storage and reporting in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas, City of Phoenix City, Alabama, has stated need to have calibration, operation, and maintenance services for sanitary flow monitors and rain gauge data collection. Storage and recording capabilities for said monitors and gauges. And whereas, ABS Environmental Services provides support for wireless sound and prism, basic web hosting, which is currently used for flow monitor and rain gauge data collection, storage and recording. And whereas, ABS Environmental Services has expertise to provide these needed services and provide an online platform for flow monitor and rain gauge data collection, storage and recording. And whereas, ABS Environmental Services has submitted a quote for wireless sound and prism, basic web hosting for three flow monitors and two rain gauges, for confirmation and service visits, product support, three flow monitor battery packs, and one rain gauge circuit board for a cost of thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Phoenix City, Alabama, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to enter into and sign an agreement with ABS Environmental Services to provide the above-mentioned services and products in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Passed through and adopted this fifteenth day of April, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for the reading of the resolution. Council, we heard the resolution. Stand by, I'd like to ask the council for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from council, uh, member Green. They have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion? All right, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Next council on the ordinance. It's a public hearing, it's a second reading. It's ordinance to resolve zero-point-two acre, two, zero-point-two acre plus minus acres of land located at thirty-seven hundred San Perallo Street from the AO Zone Department and Office District to C-four zone, Highway and First District, R and R LLC. Council, the first reading was on the fourth of March, about going to ask the court to be reading, but now at this time, I'd like to declare this as a public hearing and if there's anyone that would like to come and address the council in reference to this resolving the zero-point-two acre plus or minus acres of land, now it's time to do so. Okay. No one has stepped forward, so that this time we are declaring this public hearing closed. And again, we're not going to ask the council to be reading, but I am going to ask the, excuse me, ask the court to be reading, but I am going to ask the council for a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilman Gordon, they have a second. Second, councilman Bailey. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Council, we also have one board informant with the Phoenix City House of Authorities, one open. A person that has been serving on that has been contacted and notified by her office. So the best thing to say, I'd like to ask for a motion to reappoint Mrs. Tasha Sanders to the Phoenix City House.
Motion to reappoint, you said.
Okay, we have a motion from councilman Bailey, they have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Bailey. Ready, Mrs. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Call from both.
Councilmember Day.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Wardy.
Yes.
Mayor Law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next council on the license application. This is a first reading. It's a first reading, it's an application for on-premise beer license, on-premise wine license, and on-premise whiskey wine license. Submitted, submitted by Albeck State House of Florida LLC on business as Albeck State House twelve-seventy-five, located at thirty-five thirty-one US Highway two-eight slash four thirty-one, Phoenix City, Alabama. Mrs. Davis.
I have three letters, first letters. My first letter coming from the Phoenix City Police Department, George A. Sargent, Chief of Police, reference Kelly Lefferts, Albeck State House of Florida LLC. Doing business as Albeck State House twelve-seventy-five, thirty-five thirty-one, US Highway two-eight slash four thirty-one, Phoenix City, Alabama, six-eight-six-seven. I have renewed applications for on-premise beer, on-premise wine, and on-premise whiskey wine licenses, wine licenses, and I have no objections to the issuance of these licenses to the applicant based upon her criminal background justification. Second letter, coming from fire chief Kristen Kennedy. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Outback State House of Florida LLC doing business as Outback State House twelve seventy-five, located at thirty-five thirty-one, U.S. Highway two eighty, four thirty-one, Viny City, Alabama, three six eight six seven. The applicant has applied for on-premise beer, on-premise wine, and on, and whiskey wine licenses. A final inspection has been conducted, and this facility meets the bar code requirements for this type occupancy. Third letter comes from Chief Building Official Ray Rogers. This letter is in reference to the application submitted by Kelly Lefferts of Outback State House of Florida LLC doing business as Outback State House twelve seventy-five, located at thirty-five thirty-one, U.S. Highway two eighty, four thirty-one, for an on-premise beer, on-premise wine, and whiskey wine licenses. This facility has been inspected and meets the minimum building code requirements. This office has no objections to the approval of these licenses. And that concludes our first letters.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Davis. Council referred to first reading, at this time I'd like to ask for motion to place on first reading.
Motion to place on first reading.
All right, motion, councilman Daye, that's a second.
Yes.
And councilmember Green. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes, thank you. Next council, I'd like to call upon our attorney, Mr. Jerry Brand.
As we discussed in the works yesterday, we have forty claims on the original lease of claims that, uh, had been previously filed and gotten given, um, the legal parties of authority to find us, check some, um, from, uh, where we thought some of them may be a little high. Uh, the first one is, um, a claim filed by, um, Out, insurance company, um, who had a good thing going, and this amount of loss that they are, I mean, extended out for a hundred and twenty dollars, we, I negotiated with them, and we have not reached a resolution yet, so, mine, um, and, and what we've talked about, lots and, um, channels, said yesterday, we, we're gonna get, um, they refuse to get another estimate, so we're gonna get some estimates, and then we will bring it back up once we get those estimates, okay?
Okay.
And then, um...
So, let's, let's take a second.
Sure.
We won't take a second.
Right.
So, we, thank you for agreeing on the resolution.
That's what our conclusion is, if we, uh, not accommodate that, and if we give two additional estimates, then come back and make a recommendation, get all the votes.
Right, yes. So, council at this time I'd like to ask for motion to table this, to give our attorney time to, uh, give with some other, uh, estimates. Motion today, motion to take, Mrs. Davis, and I have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Bailey. Okay. Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next, uh, claim is a claim we originally denied, um, we got the, uh, correspondence from suburb claims, which is, um, on behalf of the GACO insurance, um, the, um, amount is under a thousand nine hundred and twenty-two seventy-five, uh, considering everything that, you know, could happen if we were, uh, continue to deny, uh, the cost of one of the pay on the claim, and the other, they use a thousand nine hundred and twenty-two seventy-five to set down this one.
So, there's your recommendation?
Yes.
All right, so, council, it's time I'd like to ask for motion for, um, the recommendation of the, our attorney, Mr. Jerry Brand.
Motion to approve.
Motion, uh, councilwoman Gordon, second, councilman Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the final claim was filed by a student, he was armed, uh, he was armed, he had a water leak, uh, um, picking up southern sand and grime that, um, related to, the water leak was caused by, um, flowers, um, grass and some other, um, things, but he filed a claim, he had three claims he was supposed to, the lowest being four thousand six oh four eighty-two, but seven hundred and fifty dollars of that amount was for, um, was that he had planned on the city rider. And our policy has always been, the whole is, someone plants something on the rider, if we have a new, then we're not alive, then we're gonna have to put them back. Um, and like I said, seven hundred and fifty now, when we, when we calculated this yesterday, we, we messed up, okay? I thought that was, yeah, the chain, I would have said, but it's, um, when you deduct seven hundred and fifty dollars from four thousand six oh four eighty-two, you actually come up with three thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. Okay?
Okay.
And that's not...
You do, but again, and I'm not trying to take up the state, no state really will do that, but I don't see also my responsibility to, but if he decides not to take that advice to a court, do we stand to lose more than seven hundred dollars, or, and I'm not saying that we have a constitution, seven hundred dollars, I mean, there's a point where you have to do what is right for everybody, that's what I'm trying to say. So, I'm assuming that everybody could be, if it was leaving their mind, uh, I would not be able to recuperate, you know, what's on city properties, other than maybe a mailbox or something. That's what I'm saying, anything else I put out there, spring system and all that, that would be on me.
It's right with this.
What did he commit, Russ, who did that?
Yeah, but part of that discussion, you gotta remember, part of that discussion was this, and I'm trying to get this clarified, it's the difference in the city right way and the easement.
Right.
This is an easement on that property. Part of putting that stuff back together is planning on putting some of that back in the easement. It's supposed to be a veteran being with this to make sure that he understands not to put, replant anything else in the easement, and they have to go back into that easement.
Because, you know, he didn't have a right to play.
That's correct, and that was part of the problem that you have. That's even when, like I say, other cases, when people on the exterior of other people's yard, that is, you know, if you run your, your kitchen system out there, in there, they have to come to work, that's home system, that's your, that's not supposed to be yourself.
I chose that.
But at the same time, when you're dealing with, and that's it property. But easement is still the property owner's property, but at the same time, it's in the treatment, you have the right to work through there because that's been there. So, that's getting, getting people to understand what the differences are, and it's true that that's part of where we work that out, okay? But that, uh, if there's anything else, it's just like, it's gonna be torn out.
Yeah, right away, yeah. And not only that, but easement, you do own the property, that's just someone else has got the right to use it for them.
Especially in all the utility discussions, especially when things are developed, that's all planned and put together when during the development time or that, or if something had to be constructed because something went wrong. That's, you know, so it's, it's a matter of which way, and, and I think we gotta work that out to see what happens next after.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, and I just, you know, and I, and I understand when you come to trouble and having expertise, but, but, as far as the sudden defeat, if, if we tell you like, I think you're deviating from the pumps...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we have to give everybody that way, and we haven't done that, right? That's what I'm saying, you have to keep it, as the lady always said, you have to make consistent, you know, I don't mind if I consistently wrong, it's maybe just because, or maybe just be wrong sometimes, I'm thinking too, I'm doing a hang that, then I gotta go back to the regular, so, uh, you need, need to be right, or you look at injury, or the, you can't get your bad before play hard, Scott, yeah.
Right.
So, this, all this stuff, like, again, it's a letter we don't understand. Yeah, I'm, and we put the letter with, uh, advisors, and he cannot claim anything on the right of order, and that is...
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ah, so you're ready for this?
Definitely.
This is gonna break your balance instead of having, sorry.
Right.
Council, we refer to the recommendation of our attorney, uh, it's time I'd like to ask for motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Gordon, motion to second, I have councilman Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Davis?
Councilmember Daye?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Gordon?
Yes.
Mayor Law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you so much. Again, thank you all, uh, to our team and to everyone that is here, and the ones that have citizens that are here, we appreciate it. Uh, at this time, like I asked the council, are there any specific things or anything that might they have to take away, say?
On the last call, this man, uh, had that one, then it was, it, it forced it.
We even talk...
There you go.
Okay, so, we need to hear that.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, uh, you're ready to talk about when, when, whenever my turn comes.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, the council, before I turn over to the, uh, city manager. Okay?
Okay. Well, I wanna go over, I wanna talk about workforce, period, that's part of the topic that I wanted to talk about, and I wanted to see if people take a look at what's going on around the world, and what really happens in a time period that your workforce is not up to par to the numbers that you need to have. I don't know if y'all watch the news, but you look at John Deere, who dominates the farm equipment throughout the United States and the world, um, CEO over there is in a big fight with our president right now about moving some facilities to Mexico, and the reason why the people cut it short is because the workforce in America is suck. There's not enough people to work, so, he said his facilities over in Mexico, he can't get enough people to work, to do the job that he needs, and that's some of all the places that we deal with, we call agencies, we deal, we deal with railroad, we call agencies for the state panel, where everything's going, and you have a project that somebody retired and left on the desk, always hadn't been reassigned, so that right there causes a stoppage on a lot of work throughout the United States. I found it, I think, well, it's not us, we're, we're invisible, well, it affected us ever since two thousand and nineteen when I worked with, and even listening to the people yesterday that was sitting there, flood zone from, uh, Grove Arkham, the level view all the way through Fifth Street South, you gotta remember, even with the young lady who had done her research, that I think, you know, was real good, and she took a look, and she can understand with the rainfall and everything that's coming now, but you all might remember on Fifth Street South, and that didn't get the prevention yesterday too, that's a two million dollar road, we went into there, there was a road already set, a cannon above where the house was, on the left and right hand side through that stretch, we went in and with storm drains all the way from one end to the, uh, exact price, one point eight plus million dollars on there. So, we had two tiers over that, even in the other thing that we have to look at, and a lot of the planning that the people were active for, and thinking about the whole situation, is take a look at, people need to understand you can't build flood zones, they got different regulations where you can build up, and that don't mean you should, but as long as it's property where the people own, you're saying the change doesn't happen. So, in this same area, and I'll be coming to your, that real soon, 'cause I talked to an owner of a lot of property, a patio subdivision, a whole number of subdivisions that have been built at the end of Core Park, and we had to discuss with him yesterday, and looking at what, we gotta get a defensive mode now, as far as looking at what we can purchase that property to prevent development, we need to prevent some, and when people were talking about, what are we planning to do to, to help with this, and also looking at since two thousand and nineteen, how our workforce has decreased, and it's hard to build it back up, and I did to other chain, I'm talking about, um, the iron grid, we had Troy University, we mentioned, tell you all about the, the results of that, and the hope that we have from what they were doing down there, but even looking at, I've instructed our city engineer to get in contact with contractors that will help clean out our systems, starting from four thirty-one South over by Fifth Street across there, all the way through that whole line, all the way through, through Core Park, at the same time, we're gonna consistently stay on call with core engineers to make sure that we can get somebody here any time of day on when they will come back, period, our group to take care of what we need to take care of. If we're gonna be in the fight, and people want to understand somebody fighting for them, we have the people here with the knowledge and everything else, and we have got the bug, the agencies, and our state representatives and congresspeople to fight for what we have going on for Viny City, and, and like our, um, EMA represent said yesterday, David Martin spoke about how many other areas that we have funding into, so, not to this degree on, and not so persistent, that, that this whole, it was kind of sad, and, and, you know, disturbing, even to sleep outside, even, you know, to tell people truth about things, and make sure that at the end, trying to fight the limited, and fight to get there and make a battle on them, I wanna make sure that we put a hundred and fifty percent effort towards that, I wanna make sure, uh, it, it, it never gets where it's just because preventing it, but not acting, and I hated some of the things yesterday, even, even to the park where some didn't try to be fair, it's, it's, it's the current, what we do with the insurance companies anywhere else, and losing everything else, when things get out of hand like that, it is, it's, it's a, act of courage. Well, if you want to hear something, and I can't, it, 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 it's, that's something that you can't fight, that's cause you don't have no tornado, and when your gear's severe, or you're in flood zone, your gear is gonna be flooding, that means you have to evacuate, that means you have to give yourself a chance, so, on that part, all we can do is make sure that we are doing everything we can to make it more comfortable, and the drainage and everything else, and you don't fight that, cause we deal with a challenge, it's critical when it swells, and when it swells, when they, when your filter gates are coming open, when the land has to do these stuff, or, and it is the west point, and west point has to open up this gate, or it will tear the dam up, it's water, it's forceful, it's real forceful, and when that's coming through, we know at that point in time, we're gonna have problems in Viny City, cause it's got to come through here to get to where it's going.
Well, you know, and, and, yeah.
Yeah, and everybody's scheduled, that is one of those family schedules, do a certain quantity, except as much as they can before the replacement. And that's, and that's what they do.
Keep rotating.
That's all.
And, and when, when that happens, and it's a difference, if instead it's storming here
and raining, and a lot of people think this is water that's coming off the rooftops.
It's come, that's not the way it waters is.
You know, this water is flowing downhill and going to valleys, and that's where it fill up, to come back up, and it, and it's tough, but the other part is we're gonna be doing everything, as you all said yesterday, to help them with FEMA, and then that was before the, in the city's making process, and, and it's, and it's been the cities, it has remained, but you look at the span of time, and it's just one of those things, just like in other places, and, you know, I get out here sometimes, and I get probably far fence because I might watch too much news, but when you look throughout countries like that everywhere, all this, it wasn't out years ago, it's been billions of dollars trying to make a part in heaven, ladies. It's reclaiming itself. Everything comes back because it's part of the ecosystem, that way it's draining in certain areas, the way our drain is made and figured out, that's the way it's made, there's no beating that system, you know, it's got to drain somewhere, and I, look, we send you them, we, we got made, but we, do we ever think about what happened in North Carolina and Kentucky just a few months ago? That will never be revealed.
Okay.
That is the story, and people have been there for entire generations of people. It is, it is, it is horrible what happened there, as far as we do, and things like that. Okay, we're not the exception, you know, if I, if I'm sitting somewhere at my house, and it gets warning that it's a tornado, this year it's gonna be severe here, and I don't take, you know, and listen to where I need to, you know, get downstairs, get in the little house, hide, I stay upstairs in bed, don't listen, throw me down the puddles, you know, that, that be on my time, 'cause I, I didn't listen, and, and you gotta listen to the warnings and what's going on, what happens, while right now, we're trying to be in the prevention stage, or, you know, in the maintenance stage, get things taken care of, we didn't shortage of workforce that out there, that's probably what I'm looking at, some of this work is starting to be contracted out, because I was listening real good to the people yesterday, and we have to do that. Now, I wanna get to the part that Pam Campbell talked about, they did a lot of work, HR, change utilities, and different departments working together, change, you wanna come Chan, you want to come talk to us about, I would assess a hopeful success.
Yes, sir. So, we had a third, we had utilities hired, and our goal was to give people, to show divisions, different divisions, utilities department, show jobs that were available, have some positions require testing, such as building, customer service, operator, plant operator, trainees, all that, give them tests and interview. We were shocked, really, we thought we were going to have to give, give results, but we had 143 candidates show up, and, and it was, it was overwhelming, really, at first. But every one of those people, they put out their application on paper, we had a written sub, but filled out electronically, anybody who was applying for positions, required testing, we did the testing, got the results on spot. And then I, we estimate, then we interviewed about 133, there were about nine folks that could stay, again, we've offered to, in those votes, interviews. We've offered, in the process, hired 12 people for our field groups for utilities, several wish high school equipped operators that are certified, some fire players, some service maintenance workers, we have, we're trying to hire one for administration, Mark's brand, is there on the public boards, and they've offered four positions, and at least one position helps with skilled driver for a lift truck. So, all in all, also around 20, 20 skilled people to add as, as work forces. Not only that we offered these people, but now we have a substantial number of applicants that we've interviewed, some are qualified, some aren't, but we now have these folks ready to, to call back, and have a position open in that certain area. There was a lot, there was a lot of work, particularly, I think, we owe a dead gratitude to Special Chad Stan, she worked really hard on this. Sean Colgan and Jennifer Love did a tremendous shot of getting out, and helping, helping bring the people in, during the day of the event, the Straggons, and a lot of his workers, and the entire HR department was there, and when I say everybody was, was busy, a little busy, the place was full, and there were a lot of eager people there, there were a lot of young people there, there were a lot of people I noticed that were there to add to work, which was all, that's something that was kind of consistent through the interviews, is they have worked in some time. But I think we've got a, now we've got a roadmap, so it's, we think it can be tweaked and fixed and replicated for all of the departments in the city. So it was, it was a great event, it was a great learning opportunity for the city, but I would characterize it as a tremendous success. So there was a lot of hard work put into it by a lot of folks, and I can't thank them enough, but it was just a, a good event and a great exercise, and now I think we can start planning the next one, so hopefully, you know, focus in on some different departments and areas that we need, we need to focus in. So, not only did it bring 143 people to, to the event, but I think the ad, and the advertisements that we did, the TV, the radio, the social media, all that stuff, I think it put a positive image out for the city as well, so I think we want to promote that there, so it was a good event.
That's great. Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
How's this program, video with the program that Chair had up down here, people's locked up with minus 10?
It's about the work release program?
Yes.
Well, this, this has nothing to do with work release?
I know that, but I want to tell, we wait for the chair, but.
We got the home program, we're the chair.
We're, yeah, yeah, it's here.
We, we, I mean, you know, all that paper stuff you do, you know, like.
Well, that's different, they, they control, they control that change game, it's not a change game.
Analysis.
They have a choice this day, where you know, they're, they're, you know, you just play, oh, right, you need to, they'll get rid of one round here.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, though, we wait.
We have one that we started here, also with the conjunction with the chair, so, you know, you're doing work, you know, while they're in there, have a four-time job, once they get out.
I know, we get a four-time, we get four, we get, we wait.
No, yeah, he had, he had this thing, sometimes I had lockouts, so it's not consistent, certain things, the chair has to do, it's one effort, too, it'll work on, because, you know, sometimes it goes out like that, but the other thing we were doing was with, with jobs, and making sure, and, and, and be game flowing forward, that's what we were trying to make sure.
I go ahead and do it.
Well, we recently, through our work release program, we recently had folks come on, they work for us, they earn, they treat it like a community, and we had several stay on after they were having incarceration, so we've had some, some success, limited success.
That's your belief.
This, this, we have a program.
But they, I'm trying to work on the acting, not here, willing to do that.
That, that, yes, they have thought here, we, that they have ads on the programs, and the chair, or those free sides, who need what we're willing to, to release on the work scale, and constantly head to city, you know, interviews and sides, but they also said that we were, really, so there's been a lot of success there, that's all.
Okay, but you know, what we want to do, we want to thank Troy, for that, as you know, he's also, at Atlantic Junction, put a lot of things through, so it's good stuff that we've got, we have to, you know, we get these phone calls, and people, and we scare you out, you know, people are short. You know, once you see the advertisement, and people see we are trying, then they say we have some respect and sympathy for that. We just sit down by hand side, and we're nothing, we just continue to say we're just short, 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 well, what are you doing? So, yeah, you know, they can see, because things change, a lot of response too on there through Facebook, because they're keeping up with the numbers of how it comes back, and what got out to the piece between, y'all, what was the how it's contacted, that we're going to get through, how they, you know, we asked the question, how did you learn about this?
Through social, social media certainly taught us of this, a lot of times. There were two ways, two ways they could, they could see it socially. One is through our normal event posts, that people actually say whether they're going to the end or where they're interested. And we also ran through, we're on media, we ran social media ads that they were seeing through us, they're a whole collection.
Yes, that's right, and that's what we try to make sure that reach.
And we're thinking, man, if you do what you will.
That's right, that's right. We put it on there, and, you know, too, because, you know, offering people all kinds of changes, because we still have, people to say, well, I didn't hear about this, didn't hear about that, so we try to make sure we could capture the audience throughout, no matter which way.
Back over that, what the people were saying yesterday, basically, they just, they know there's no action, because they're probably out there as far as being a physical foul fix, something like that. But they just wanted to hear us say that we're willing to go down and do this, 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 and this.
That's right.
And that's what most people in the city, you keep giving them the same answer on something, and that answer's not working, because it's not able to work, but it's the truth, you can't hide it from truth, most people want it. They're dealing with the truth as long as you're giving it to them correctly, whether they can understand it, it looks like it, you have sympathy, and that you're trying to do all that you can do on your end. And they have this hiring event up there, shows that the city is out, trying to plug every hole in the dam.
That's right.
And we're trying to do everything we can, from work around to going, you know, like they said, going to the county, going to our own system, now that jail system, to everybody was tied, and up there, often, you know, take some of the workers and all, because everybody, it's, it's not just utilities, that's not the only place that's falling short. We fall short all over, but we're willing to go all over and do it, and you don't want to say that you're lowering the standards to do, and that sound like you might be lying, but even some of the standards have counterbalance, not lower, but just, we don't have to go higher just to get these, these employees happy, and, you know, so we give good work, and that's what we have to, so I think that's all that most people want to know, is that you're doing all you can do, and we are doing all you can do.
And what we're trying to, we're trying to do something that people have doubts yet, we're trying to do something as far as hiring, you're trying to do something now where you've got legalized marijuana, you got medical marijuana, you got people just going in, because they like it. So dealing with that, and you're trying to give it to these charities that they have, the one thing we don't have, the option of changing, is ignoring that.
No, it's awesome.
So people out here working, you know, it's a lot of duty to it.
Most people don't count, look, if y'all are big drunks, hey, I mean, you counted, I said like that to the person, look, the police is going to be sitting down here running the roadblock when we leave the strictly party, so you don't need to be drinking.
That's right.
I mean, that's, you know, you counted, you just get a little faster.
Fair enough.
But a lot of people, boy, yes, but some people take it, they take it up on the message, they still have their drinks, it's not the roadblock.
There's a lot of messages missing, we're going on, you know, so you're dealing with that, but we don't have the option, and some probably private building places that decide we are not going to do that, you know, we don't, we don't have an option, so we, we have to play it, we have to play it on our own rules.
Yeah, play it on our own.
You know, that's, but that's, that's what I mean, yeah, to say, you know, thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Again, thank you all, we appreciate everyone being here, this meeting, this is the last one for this month, and we'll break up on that, so want to thank all our department people, the department is in a certain, this council, I would think, and certainly thank the citizens, also thank City D, being a brave and fearless citizen, and let's go out and do something good today, do one kind of kindness, thank you all so much, and we do stand your honor.